Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Shuboy, our mission statement, please.
Unmute. At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Thank you. Ms. Shuboy, our role.
Deborah Machon.
I'm attending in person, City of Richmond, County of Macomb, Michigan.
Thank you. Angela Paceto.
I am attending in person from Richmond City, Macomb Township, Michigan.
Thank you. I am in person, City of Richmond, Macomb, Michigan.
I'll be joining us later with notice.
In person in Richmond, Macomb County, Michigan.
Thank you.
I am present in person, City of Richmond, Macomb County, Michigan.
Thank you. Sheri Zubey.
I'm attending in person, City of Richmond, Macomb County, Michigan.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Okay. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
We're going to remove the one item.
Right.
Wait, 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 Deb.
Do we, do we need to change it?
You need to say what you're taking off the agenda and then ask a motion.
Before we, okay, thank you, Mrs. Talto. We are going to be removing item D from the action items. And the rest of the agenda will, so item, the approval of cafeteria will become D, and then the rest of the agenda stays. So do I have a motion at this time to approve the changed agenda?
I motion to accept the change agenda as presented. Is that right?
That'll work.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the consent agenda as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support for this motion?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just wanted to point out the agenda minutes that you have in front of you. There was a correction pointed out to us by Sheri, thank you. We made that correction in the official minutes, so the copy you have in front of you has that correction.
Okay, Ms. Talto, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just had two questions. Mr. Wamsley, there's no, on the open spots, there's no Schedule B listed?
We are, the Schedule B Fall Athletics posting is up today, so we're going to go through and do all those fall ones, Mr. Reinhardt and I, filling those positions. So at a future meeting, you'll see now the remaining open ones. Next week, I believe the posting is up for the winter sports for next year. And then we'll also be doing the spring posting pretty, so we're kind of ending this year and starting next year and seeing how who, what positions we still yet need to fill or still need to fill over the summer.
Okay. And then the openings for the COVID building aids and the building substitutes at Lee, are we short?
Yeah, and the substitutes, we have run with one building substitute. We budgeted this year and are planning with the budget that we've been talking about, two at every building. So our hope is to get a second one at Lee for next year. The building aids, we're looking to make sure we have at least two at every building that are full time through the entire school year. So again, the budget that we're planning for next year is having those positions, so we're trying to get a leg up on and getting those postings and getting it filled so that we can start into next year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any, anything else, Mr. Wamsley, under, under that section?
Just the resignation of Jolie Wachinski. She's resigning from the volleyball coach. She still is a social worker here, so she's not leaving anywhere, just from that position she's resigning.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, Mr. Wamsley will give us a bond update.
Okay, during the, when we were virtual, we moved many of the projects ahead what we could to try to expedite the, the summer bond projects. You can see in this room, we removed the bookcases and the, we thinned out the library books of what we're keeping and what we're discarding as far as the periodicals in here. Today, they started, or this week, they started the roof on the auditorium. They were vacuuming off the rocks to replace the auditorium roof, so that's one of the major projects that we're doing this summer. So there's a lot of work going on. You'll see now we have two more trailers in the parking lot. We moved this weekend, fall and winter sports equipment that could be stored. You'll see some shipping containers behind the auditorium. That's the access equipment that we need over the summer before the bond projects will be completed, so some of the stuff we've moved in there. We've also moved out anything that we could get moved out now rather than wait till the end of the school year. We will have one more move, which is the week after Memorial Day, which will be the early childhood wing, because they finished the week before Memorial Day. So we are planning that move, and then the major move will happen beginning Friday, June 11th at noon. All the student desk chairs, all this furniture and everything will begin moving out. Now that I say that out loud, we're going to need to think about our board meetings, so let me rephrase that. This may not get moved out on June 11th, so, because this is, this room will get new ceilings, new lights, new carpet, et cetera. So we'll have to work that one out, but the projects are moving ahead. The windows should be going in any day now at Lee. In the addition, so you should actually see the boards coming down and the windows coming up, the classrooms, the cabinets are in, the classrooms are painted, the ceilings are in. They haven't done the floors yet, obviously that would be the last thing that gets put in. A lot of projects, so I'm going to offer it anytime if any board member would like to, has any time you want to do a walk around, or if we want to schedule something as a board at some point to, to walk around the buildings and kind of get a scope, or if you want to wait till the end it, you can do that too, but it is very exciting to see the, the changes. I am really excited about the middle school office changes because of the secure vestibule, as well as the changes when the high school layout's done to create that secure vestibule. All of our buildings, once you get in the office, you will not be able to get into the building unless you have a swipe card or you're buzzed into the building. So as visitors and parents, you know, if something were to go wrong in the office, it keeps them secure in that office area. So it's just an added layer of security at all three of our buildings going forward, so. That's about it.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to start our presentations. We have, our first one is the instructional spotlight of the Class of 2021 Top 10 by Ms. Area and Mr. Castle.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Richmond Community Schools is proud to be honoring the 2021 Top 10 graduates. These 10 individuals have not only persevered during a traditional academically challenging school year, but also endured additional challenges brought upon by the global pandemic. Through their hard work and dedication, they have proven that no obstacle is too great to overcome. Both the students and the parents who supported them are a testament to academic excellence, perseverance, and resiliency. We are extremely proud of your accomplishments and will honor you one by one. Here to acknowledge your achievements this evening is your principal, Mr. Castle.
Thank you, Ms. Era. As the principal of Richmond High School, one of my greatest honors is to introduce the top 10 students of each graduating class. These 10 students have shown consistent academic excellence over their tenure at Richmond High School. In addition to their academic excellence, I can speak to their character, work ethic, and selflessness of this year's group. This year's group includes both members and officers of the National Honor Society, early college students, student athletes, and students involved in a litany of extracurricular activities. In addition to being honored as members of Richmond High School's top achieving academic performers, many are also being recognized as the top academic performers in the Blue Water Area Conference and the Macomb Area Conference. This group of outstanding young men and women have epitomized what it means to be dedicated to excellence, and it is my pleasure to introduce the Richmond High School Class of 2021 Top 10. Students, once I've completed all of the slides, I will return to you all by name and ask that you say hello to trigger the camera so that we can see you. At that time, I will ask a parent to place a top 10 medal around your neck. Let's begin. Jasmine Alfaro, with her parents, Herberto and Rosa Alfaro. Jasmine has a 3.986 GPA, is a member of the National Honor Society. Her post-secondary plans include attending Oakland University to study engineering. Jasmine says her greatest academic achievement was making the top 10 tonight, so I'm glad you made it, Jasmine. Her greatest academic influence was Mr. Berg. Jasmine says he taught me that if you work hard enough for what you want, sometimes it paid off, and it certainly has for you, Jasmine. Her best memory of Richmond Community Schools is this year when the girls' cross-country team won a regional championship. Congratulations, Jasmine. Next is Jalen Amdar, with her parents Heidi and George Amdar. Jasmine has a GPA of 4.01, 4.014, and is also a member of the National Honor Society. Her post-secondary plans include going to Goshen College to play volleyball and study exercise science. Jalen says her greatest academic achievement is staying in the top 10 throughout the four years of high school. Her greatest academic influence are her parents, Mr. Rudbein and Mr. Slater. Her best memory of Richmond Community Schools was a white-out game at Armada her freshman year. Congratulations, Jalen. Next, we have Alyssa Sisterman, with her parents Sandra Richards and Nick Sisterman. Alyssa sports a GPA of 4.024 and is also a proud member of the National Honor Society. Her post-secondary plans are to complete the Early College of Macomb and then transfer to Wayne State University to study psychology and social work. Her greatest academic achievement was earning an associate's degree while still in high school. That's quite impressive, Alyssa. Her greatest academic influence is her brother Nicholas Sisterman, who has inspired her to be as academically inclined and innovative as he is. Her best memory of Richmond Community Schools, or her fondest memories, include jamming out with the John Slater experience at assemblies, when we could still have them, thank you, Alyssa, and Dr. Ladd's witty comments in class and in the halls. Alyssa is also a proud member of the Blue Water, Blue Water All Conference All Academic Team and Macomb Area Conference All Academic Team. These teams are a combination of grade point average and SAT and truly mark an elite group of academic students within Macomb and the Blue Water Area Conferences. Congratulations, Alyssa, that's quite an honor. Next, we have Nicholas Fistler, with parents Darren Fistler and Susan Porter. Nicholas sports a GPA of 4.027 and plans on attending Northwood University to major in accounting post-high school. Nicholas states his greatest academic achievement was a CTE Student of the Year, which Nicholas received earlier this year. For those of you who don't know, that's quite an honor and represents the best and brightest students in career technical education within Macomb County. Says his greatest academic influence is Mr. Wagner. His best memory of Richmond Community Schools is taking part in We the People in Dr. Ladd's class his junior year. Congratulations, Nicholas. Next, we have Amelia Ryan, with her parents John and Linda Ryan. Amelia has a GPA of 4.047 and is also a proud member of the National Honor Society. Her post-secondary plans are to attend Macomb Community College and then transfer to a local university where she's undecided on her college major. But knowing Amelia, no doubt, whatever she picks, she'll be successful. Her greatest academic achievement is being in the top 10 and earning all As throughout high school. Amelia says her greatest academic influence are the great teachers and staff from Richmond Community Schools, and I can definitely second that, Amelia. Her best memory of Richmond Community Schools are all the fun times she had performing at concerts and halftime shows with Richmond High School band. Congratulations, Amelia. Next, we have Caitlin Sears, with parents Kathy and Gary Sears. Caitlin has a GPA of 4.073, is a treasurer of the National Honor Society. Caitlin's post-secondary plans are to finish the Early College of Macomb and then transfer to a university and study psychology. Caitlin's greatest academic achievement is being accepted into the Early College Program of Macomb. Her greatest academic influence, academic influence are Mrs. Davidson and Mr. Ogilvy. Caitlin's best memory in Richmond Community Schools are the homecoming bonfires with her friends each year in high school. Congratulations, Caitlin. Next, we have Melissa Rochan, with her parents John and Dawn Rochan. Melissa has a GPA of 4.096 and is also a proud member of the National Honor Society. Melissa's post-secondary plans are to complete the Early College of Macomb for an Associate's in Arts Degree and then transfer to Michigan Tech for either electrical or mechanical engineering. Melissa's greatest academic achievement is being on the honor roll for all four years in Dean's List and Macomb Community College for 2020. Melissa states that her greatest academic influence are her parents for always pushing her to be better. She's very proud of being on the Dean's List semifinalist in First Robotics. Her best memory in Richmond Community Schools are football games with the marching band and winning the Southfield District Event in Robotics and bringing home her first blue banner. Melissa is also a proud member of the BWAC All Academic Team. Congratulations, Melissa. Must also acknowledge Nicholas and Amelia as members of the Blue Water All Academic Team. I apologize for skipping over on that, your accomplishments were so numerous, I zoomed right by that. Congratulations. Next, we have Samantha Gall, with parents Susan and Andrew Gall. Samantha has a GPA of 4.099 and is also a member of the National Honor Society. Her post-secondary plans include attending Central Michigan University, major in meteorology. So when the weather's like today, we're all going to blame you, Samantha. Her greatest academic influence, academic achievement is passing AP Calc with a good grade. Her greatest academic influence are her parents, who have always encouraged her to chase what she loves, and even when she may have not gotten the grade she wanted, they were always there to support her and pick her back up. Her best memory of Richmond Community Schools was the John Slater Experience Band Concert they had at an assembly. She said it was so much fun just to see the whole school having a great time, and best of all, it was free. Congratulations, Samantha. Next, we have Skylar Schwartz, with parents James and Heather Schwartz. Skylar has an impressive GPA of 4.102 and is vice president of the National Honor Society. Her post-secondary plans are to attend Macomb Community College for her associate degree and then transfer to a university for her bachelor degree. She then plans on pursuing a degree in medicine. Skylar says her greatest academic achievement is setting high academic standards for herself and then meeting them. Skylar states that her greatest academic influence has been Dr. Ladd. Her best memory of Richmond Community Schools is anytime she was in Dr. Ladd's classroom. Although there's not a specific time or memory, a lot of her favorite memories reside within his classroom. I was always laughing with Dr. Ladd and my classmates, and she says she even had fun when she was doing those 20-page finals. So you are a much stronger student than I could ever be, Skylar. Congratulations. Finally, we have Sarah Gasko, with parents Sheri and Thomas Gasko. Sarah sports an incredible 4.108 GPA and is a member of the National Honor Society, in fact, president of the National Honor Society. Her post-secondary plans are to finish Early College of Macomb and then transfer to Michigan State University to study environmental education or environmental engineering. Her greatest academic achievement is finishing number one in her class. Her greatest academic influence is Mrs. Germain. Her best memory of Richmond Community Schools, and anyone who was there will remember this, was the 2019 Homecoming Parade her junior year. The band was all set up at BB Street Park and ready to go. The parade began, and then as they got onto Main Street, the skies opened up and it began to rain. She says they had no choice but to continue walking down the road in the rain. The rest of the color guard and I danced and laughed together with our flags as the band played their tunes. It was the best worst-case scenario and memory she hopes she never forgets. Sarah is also a member of the Blue Water Area Conference All Academic Team as well as the Macomb Area Conference All Academic Team. Quite a set of accolades. Congratulations, Sarah. At this time, I'm going to introduce each of you by name, and if you would please say something so that the camera will train onto you, and at that time, I'm going to ask one of your parents to please place your top 10 medals around your necks. At this time, I would like to introduce Jasmine Alfaro. Jasmine, could you say something or wave? I see you, Jasmine. Mr. and Mrs. Alfaro.
Hi.
There you are. Mr. and Mrs. Alfaro, please place a top 10 medal around Jasmine's neck.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Jasmine.
Thank you.
It's now my pleasure to introduce Jalen Amdar. Jalen, please say hello.
Hello.
Mr. and Mrs. Amdar, please place a top 10 medal around Jalen's neck.
Yay.
Congratulations, Jalen.
Good job, Jalen.
Thank you.
It's now my pleasure to introduce Richmond High School Top 10 Member, Alyssa Sisterman. Alyssa, please say hello.
Hello.
Mrs. Richards and Mr. Sisterman, please place a top 10 medal around Alyssa's neck. Congratulations, Alyssa. Now introducing Richmond High School Top 10 Member, Mr. Nicholas Fistler. Nicholas, please say hello.
Hello.
Good evening. Mrs. Porter and Mr. Fistler, please place a top 10 medal around Nicholas's neck. Congratulations, Nicholas. Now introducing Richmond High School Top 10 Member, Amelia Ryan. Amelia, please say hello.
Hello.
Good evening, Amelia. Mr. and Mrs. Ryan, please place a top 10 medal around Amelia's neck. Congratulations, Amelia. Now introducing Richmond High School Top 10 Member, Caitlin Sears. Caitlin, please say hello.
Hello.
Hi, Caitlin. Mr. and Mrs. Sears, please place a top 10 medal around Caitlin's neck. Congratulations, Caitlin. Now my pleasure to introduce Top 10 Member, Melissa Rochan. Melissa, please say good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. and Mrs. Rochan, please place a top 10 medal around Melissa's neck. Congratulations, Melissa. Now introducing Richmond High School Top 10 Member, Samantha Gall. Samantha, please say hello. There you are. Mr. and Mrs. Gall, please place a top 10 medal around Samantha's neck.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Samantha. Now introducing Richmond High School Top 10 Member, Skylar Schwartz. Skylar, please say hello.
Hello.
Mr. and Mrs. Schwartz, please place a top 10 medal around Skylar's neck.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Skylar. Now introducing Richmond High School Top 10 Member, Sarah Gasko.
Hi. Hello.
Mr. and Mrs. Gasko, please place a top 10 medal around Alyssa's neck.
Sarah's neck.
Yes, let's do that, sorry. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my absolute pleasure to present to you the Richmond High School Class of 2021 Top 10. Thank you so much. Congratulations again, you well-deserved honor.
Thank you, Mr. Castle and Ms. Era and all of our Top 10 students. Congratulations again. Okay, we're moving on to our next presentation, which is the Instructional Spotlight of our High School Art Program. This is presented by Ms. Era and Ms. Kagniak.
I am going to screen share. All right. This is a true blue moment for the Richmond High School. For our second spotlight this evening, we are acknowledging the achievements in art for our Richmond High School students. Students developed their work during the school year and chose their strongest work for competitions and portfolio review. Art was judged based on skill level, the use of media and medium, creativity, and technique. Students submitted work and paperwork on an online platform for each competition this year. Students competed at a local, regional, and national level. Here to present on the artwork, various competitions, and achievements in art is the high school art teacher, Ms. Kagnak.
Hello, everyone, how are you doing? I'm doing swell. I'm really excited to showcase some of our students' work. They worked really hard this year. Even with there being a pandemic, they really have proven themselves as an artist as well as a student. So tonight, I'm going to go over some of the things that they have achieved and their awards. Okay, so the first competition that I'm going to discuss is Classics Art and Writing. This is a national competition that we compete in every year, so we do have some regional winners. First on our list is Ella Allen for her photography. She received a silver key. Riley Bartolone Photography received one silver key and two honorable mentions. Madeline Foss Photography received an honorable mention. Bethany Capeluck, or Capelick, sorry, Photography Honorable Mention. Priscilla Mullen Rutledge Drawing and Illustration received a silver key. Madeline Newman for Drawing and Illustration received an honorable mention. Amelia Ryan Drawing and Illustration received an honorable mention. And Emily Saunders Photography received an honorable mention. And this year, they did hold a virtual ceremony, and I believe that is still available on YouTube. So this is just some examples of the students' works that have received honorable mentions or silver keys this year. So we have Photography, Drawing and Illustration in Charcoal Scratchboard. And here's some more drawing. We have colored pencil as well as photography. Our next competition is the Wayne Tri-County Show. So I want to congratulate our sophomores this year. We had three sophomores that got into this competition, and as soon as they are accepted into this competition, they get an automatic $1,000 scholarship for each artwork that is accepted. So we have a couple students that received a $1,000 scholarship and one student that received $2,000. This year's program, it was a virtual ceremony, which I was a part of, so we got to watch that, and that was great. So let's see who received an award. Okay, so in this Macomb-Wayne and Oakland County competition, we have a few students. Nathan Peer for his digital arts received a $1,000 scholarship. Riley Bartolone for two of her photographs, she got $2,000 in total scholarship to Wayne State. And Priscilla Mullen Rutledge for her drawing and illustration received a $1,000 scholarship. So students that decide to go to Wayne State University would get those scholarships upon their application and approval. Okay, so next on our list is the Macomb Secondary Show at the Anton Center. This year, they were able to do a small in-person gallery view. However, you could only go there if you were to schedule times, but it was nice to still be able to see all that work virtually and the online platform. So congratulations to our RHS Blue Devils. The Anton Center, they received 715 submissions for the Macomb Secondary Show, and they only accepted 274 works by 191 students, which were displayed online exhibits. 97 of those accepted award winners and portfolio pieces were on display. And that was during March, it was March 6th through April 3rd. And that was during March, it was March 6th through April 13th. There were 29 participating teachers and a total of 35 pieces from Richmond High School were accepted. We had 10 award winners, which is really awesome, considering that's a smaller local show. So our 10th grade category award winners were Isabel Dabelier for her photography. She received second place. And third place is Madeline Foss for her digital arts. In the 11th grade category, we received third place. That was Stephanie Lindsay for her digital arts. And we received a number of honorable mentions. And then we have listed all the students that were accepted into that show. Oh, you're fine. It's okay if you went forward. Ella Allen Photography received an honorable mention. Madison Ball for Photography. Nathan Peer Digital Arts. Priscilla Mullen Rutledge Drawing and Illustration, she had two. Stephanie Lindsay Photography. And Jacob Ryan for Sculpture, he was also featured on cngnews.com for his sculpture. Our other participants that made it into the show were Ella Allen for Photography. Isabel Dabelier, she had two photographs get in. Madeline Foss, two photographs. Priscilla Mullen Rutledge Photography. Aiden Kowalski for his drawing. Kaylee Crackiolo Digital Arts. Casey Malberg Photography. Bethany Capellic Photography. Emma Peters had one drawing, three digital drawings accepted. Tremont Rodriguez had two drawings accepted. Cosette Bartels Photography. Riley Bartolone Photography. Jacob Ryan, he had a second sculpture also get in. Stephanie Lindsay Photography. Colin Boyd Digital Arts. David DeBrasco Drawing. Agardo Alfaro Digital Art. Katerina Lindsay Digital Art. And Shannon Hulk Drawing. And here you see our 10 award winners. So we have a combination of Photography, Digital Arts, Drawing and Illustration and Sculpture. And then these are also other artworks that also that made it into the show.
Congratulations to all of our amazing artists at Richmond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all of our art students. I know they've put in a lot of hard work and time and we always seem to do well. Thank you also to Mrs. Cagniak. Okay, at this time, Ms. Walmsley and Mrs. Shad, Ms. Shad are gonna do the 2022 Budget Projections.
Okay, we have had a couple of board meeting conversations on this. So the front part of the documents that you have are the assumptions we talked about at the last board meeting. Which we assumed, I'll just quickly go over them, that we assume property taxes were assumed to be the same as this year, that we anticipate them going up, the revenue. We budgeted summer school tuition at zero, gate receipts and admission at zero revenue. Revenue from local donations at zero. And then we adjusted the childcare facility rentals, field trips, all the revenues that we obtained throughout the year at pre non-pandemic amounts, which would have been the FY 18, excuse me, 19 budget. So not the FY 20, because we, the last part of the year we were affected, but the FY 19 budget. So those, that's where we started with the dollar values. We assumed our enrollment was to be flat, so whatever our FT allocation is that we receive state A payment for this year, we assume that same number that we're gonna get payment for next year. You'll see in the backup, we, there was many of the, the House, the Senate and the Governor's budget proposals. Oops, we assumed $100 per pupil increase, which would be the lowest of the three budgets. We also assumed that this year, we, any district that received had an increase in a student enrollment. Got a $66 per student increase. That we assumed to be zero, that it won't be in any budgets. We left all the categoricals such as GSRP in the state that we get to be the same as this year. And then we eliminated the revenue for the Competitive Safety Grant, which was, we've received that revenue and the expense is already done. Again, the foundation, we assumed to be $100 per pupil. That last week, the, the state did announce, or they have a published a document, it's about 94 pages that gives you a side-by-side comparison of the three budgets. So if anybody would liked it, a copy, I'd be more than happy to share it, but it's, I have not gone through all of them to really compare, but everything I've said so far is the most conservative nature in this budget, so. The other federal assumptions or the federal revenue assumptions was that we eliminated the carryover for the 2019 school year. We assumed the full, the, excuse me, the coronavirus release fund. Esser 1 MISD Care is the rebate for purchasing devices, childcare relief, all those are going away, which was a total of about 881,000. And we assumed the Esser 2 full allocation of 725,000. And we assumed the one-third of the Esser 3, which would be about 582,000. Change in the revenue enhancement millage, we know it's going up. We have not received that from the county yet, from Paul Bodea. We anticipate that any day, so I believe at our next, hopefully at our next boarding, we'll be able to finalize that. And then you can see all the expenses that, that was the revenue and we assumed all the expenses in the budget. So for instance, we added two teaching positions. We added a second grade, which is a shift of kindergarten. A fourth grade position and then taking prep at the high school where teachers were teaching on their prep and creating a position for that. So those positions that have not only the salary, but also the benefits attached to them. We included any contractual increases that settled contracts have that we have to offer. We assumed the hard cap increase limits, which is a 3.7% increase on anybody who has a current health plan. We assumed everybody's health plan is exactly the same as it is this year. The rates for optical dental and long-term, we have not yet received yet, so those are exactly as they were this year. We increased the retirement rate, the missers. It's going up to 40, I think 43.28 or 42.38, I can't remember, it's about, it's a, as you can see on the increase there, depending on, and so forth. Retirement rates for the ULL, UAAL stabilization. Basically, that's funds that we get from the state that we turn around and pay back the state for the retirement costs. Again, we eliminated the expenses for the safety competitive grant. We zeroed out all the expenses related to carryover, where we zeroed out all the expenses related to the coronavirus release funds that I mentioned, the revenue. We added expenditures of 725,000 for the Esser 2 allocation. We talked, and which was mostly the planned desktops, technology, the infrastructure. We added expenditures of 800, or excuse me, 582,000, which is one-third of the Esser. Some of that still has to be budgeted yet, so we just placed it in a line item, so it adds up to the 582 as more guidance is given on that one. And then we eliminated the one-time purchases, about 78,000 that we did of laptops. There were some line items for some desks and chairs. There was a donation that we received from the Athletic Foundation to pay for bleachers, so we had the expense line in for bleachers, so we took that out and we took the revenue out too. So with all those expenses, on the next set of documents, you will see a summary of each function code. You will see what the current amendment was that the board approved in February compared to the draft of the FY 22 budget in the second column. And then you'll see next to it, an increase or decrease of each function code. If you go to the third page of that document, you will see that the budget before you is, has revenues exceeding expenses by $3,193. With all of these assumptions and all the expenses that we are assuming, we have, the revenues exceed expenses by about $3,000. Now with that said, there are still some things that we need to consider. For instance, as we're going through the scheduling process, we have enough students to run the EMT program between what we would receive with our Richmond and our partner districts. There's about 20 students that are interested in the EMT program. It would be a two-hour block. And it would be for the, oh, it's a one-year program. We ran it a couple of years ago as a one-hour, one-year, one-hour. Trying to get completers, that second year was very challenging, so we are, we'll be running. The Richmond Lennox EMS is very much interested in running it. I had a conversation with Jeff White the other, last week. That's about $40,000 to run that program. It's the cost of the instructors, there's some materials we have to purchase. The textbooks have to be updated for this, this program. So that expense is not in here yet. And then the only other things would be any settled contracts going forward that are part of the general fund. From where we are at this point, I, I think we're in a very good position. Because when I look at what's gonna hap, when I believe, what I believe is gonna happen at the state is we were very conservative on our per pupil allocation. It's the lowest we budgeted. All of them are, I don't think it's gonna be $100. I think it's gonna be more, but that's where I'm speculating right now, it's up in Lansing for them to debate, but even if that increases to 150, that easily covers the cost of that EMT program. Now, we as a board, if you want the next direction, if you want to add the EMT program, which I would recommend you do, because we gain FTEs because we would pull from our partner districts, we don't have enough Richmond kids to at least make it even cost neutral. Not that, that we're trying to make a program cost neutral, but this is, this, this type of program like culinary is an expensive program to run. Because there's a lot of cost and a lot of specialized trained individuals that are running these programs. I would recommend we build it into the budget. We could, we could look at assumptions, we could look at holding off with some of the staffing postings that were there. At this point, we have only a third of our kindergartners that are registered have actually finished the process. I'm not concerned at this point. I mean, it is, a lot of families who have a first-year kindergarten, this sometimes isn't there on their radar to finish until closer to the summer. I mean, it's on our radar because we want to get them in and ready to go. But we're still under that 100, so you know, we're currently at 75 submissions, 75 kindergarten. Which is a little less than 20 if we keep the four sections. It's a little around 25 if you're, if we go down three, so we could hold off that, that fourth kindergarten and reallocate it, so there's no new expense. And shuffle them into the second and fourth grade position. With the idea in August, I'm gonna be coming to you or emailing you or letting you know our numbers there, I'm recommending adding that position back. And then we would, we would attach it on the budget amendment two. Usually the budget amendment two, as you guys saw this year is a lot of changes. People's healthcare changes, we have everything finalized, people are now in the right positions. We've, we've adjusted special ed staffing based on caseloads and numbers. It's up to the board's discretion where they would like to go. The document that you have behind that three-page document, the summary, is the line item for every account in the district. This is, this can be overwhelming, especially if you're not in this field. So that's why we put together the summary sheet by function code. Where you can kind of see the pluses and minuses, whether it's an increase or decrease in the, the allocation. You know, throughout the summer, we will be finalizing the schedule. Well, I mean, once this, we have, we'll finalize it before school starts, but as enrollment changes, as it fluctuate, we could be adding a section here or there, particularly at the secondary level. Because the numbers in a class grow too, we've gotta break it down and splitting up into two classes. That, that's a normal process that we go through. So with that, I will entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, so you're looking at, should we put the EMT program back in? That's one of the things you want us to consider?
That's one of the things I would like the board to, we can, we can put it in and begin budgeting for it. We could, I mean, I'm one that if, if we're gonna run it, we, we figure out how we're gonna pay for it now. And not, okay, let's see if we're gonna run it and then put it in a amendment two, we know these are. And we can go back through and look at expenses and line items. Now we're starting to get into the fine details of, you know, I do work with Tammy and the Renee and the principals to go through line item by line item, the, the supplies, if you will. And we went through and we looked at, you see when you look at it like transportation and the various business offices, my, our office, the media technology, there's some increases because we had some vacant positions that didn't get filled, so the cost this year was less, but assuming they're full for the full year, those costs are gonna go up next year. This budget does not cut any position. Same number of, actually increases teach of the same number of secretaries, paras, administrators, support staff from bus drivers to food service, though food service is not in this budget, it's a separate one. What's considered in central office, childcare positions, preschool, et cetera.
So if we add the EMT, we have, do we have enough kids that are coming from the other schools to?
We have about 20 and I believe there's, I'm trying to remember, because we did this last week with Mr. Castle and Mrs. Leepack. There's probably half of those, at least half of those from our neighboring schools. This is one of the programs that they really draw, that we draw kids from.
So for those that are new on the board, when we eliminated it, we eliminated it because there wasn't the interest. There wasn't students, so we took it, we took it away. So now we're back to, of the 20, 10 of them are ours?
I don't, I'd have to look at the actual classes, I don't know that for certain. I would say there's a good chunk of them that are non-district. The majority is not district. So you gain the revenue by the per pupil, by gaining these partner districts to offset the cost. This would be, I'm sorry, it'd be like a .33 FTE for every student that we get from another, another district.
Okay, so it's not because the interest has gained and our students, it's a moneymaker.
Well, we have more of our students than we had when we cut it. If you remember when we cut, I believe we were down to like four or five.
I thought it was two.
We got it down to two. There's more of our students. It's not significant, but there are more of our students interested in this program.
Mostly we're making money at it.
I would say it's offsetting our costs, yes.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to know, is it offsetting the cost or is it? Not all of it, but a good portion of it.
Where the students coming from, if they are from, because it's .33 of the sending districts FTE.
Right.
So most of them are from New Haven, so.
Well, you know, I'm a CTE person. I'd like to see it run. I think it provides our kids with a skill that they can leave here. And I know the demand is high. When I was here, they were saying they needed EMT, so.
We, we had students who graduated, who started, I believe there's at least one that I can remember, who started right there, 40, $45,000, they started right out of high school in the EMT. And it, you're right, this is a demand field that you're, they're not gonna have problems finding a job if they do well in the course. It also, the domino effect is if we have more kids completing the program, we have more completers, which then gives more added cost dollars, which is always on our radar, because we want kids to complete the CTE courses. And those added cost dollars then offset the general fund to provide supplies for those programs.
Right, and I, I agree with you 100%. I'm just in, but it did fall by the wayside, Deb, after, after you were gone, the interest wasn't there. And, and it was a killer to have to take, take it away, because it is a really good program, you're right, but I'm, I'm just concerned, I'd like to see us somehow get more of our own kids interested. There's gotta be some work done at the building to get more interest, because it is, it is a good field. And then, you know what I'm saying, I just.
I would love to have it come back.
It is really hard though. It's a very, very hard, it's a hard course. It's very intense. Brian, how long have we not had it in the district?
This will be the first full year, because when we went on quarantine last year, we, we didn't put it this.
This year, one year?
Yeah.
Okay. The only reason, okay. The only reason I was just checking.
It was, it was talked last year.
Yep.
Yeah, we cut it last year.
First full, last year.
First full year.
Okay. I just was checking because if it runs out after three years, you have to get the program recertified through the state to get your added cost. So we're good that way. Yep. So, okay, good. So, so for me, I would like to see it. If we can work it within the budget, um, I'd like to see it added.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Brian, is the 40,000 that you said it's going to cost, is that after the money from the out of district students or is that?
That's the contract we would have with Richmond Lennox EMS. And then any supplies that like we, there's books that we're going to have to purchase because they'll need updated book. We get the kids there as a teacher. They gotta have boots. They gotta wear certain safety boots. So some of those costs we, we just pay for because it's requirement for the course. So that's kind of our cost. And then once we know what kids actually show up, that will bring our cost down. By increasing our revenue on the per pupil.
Okay.
The, the per pupil doesn't directly go into CTE. It's just in our revenue account and the per pupil, but it does help the big picture in bringing that cost down.
Okay. Thank you. I'm for it.
I mean, you, you could add it. And if we, if you're fine with, uh, approving a budget where we take fund balance out to balance. We would take a portion of about 37 out of fund balance. And then we could adjust, or if you want me to get to zero, um, we can go to another round and, and look through dollars to get us to zero. I mean, if there's, if you want time to get a chance to look through the line items, and if there's questions about a certain line item. And we'll be more than happy to discuss it.
Brian, can you remind me, how many students did we budget for? Was it the same as this year, less?
It's exact, I want to say 1451 is the FTE. It's something on the camera. It's looking right now.
1,004.65.
Four, six, so that's the FT that we were given this year. To get us our, that's the blended net of the blended FTE. And we budgeted that, that's what we're budgeting that we're going to have next year.
Okay. So we're not doing less than we, than we have this year.
We assumed whatever we got from the state, that FT blend, that final, that's the number we're assuming for this year.
Okay.
Tammy, can I have that number again, please?
1,0465.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it too. I'd like to add it back in.
I could tell you this from, from talking to Jeff White, he was very excited because this is a field, he was literally on a conference call with. Other EMTs from around the state, uh, talking about the concern they have with the lack of, uh, the supply going into the field. And that they're trying to find ways to recruit. So, um, it's my hope to get that number up and get it to be a point of, you know, we're not having this conversation each year.
Well, and it might have other districts might get interested too, to, uh, send kids.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Do we, um?
Can I just interrupt you real quick? Just want to remind the board, there are, there are two, uh, variables that we still are unknown on, um. The MISC enhancement millage, which we're expecting that to be more revenue than we had this year. Housing values are going up. And if you've gotten tax bills and all that, you see it. And the other aspect is, and I just had it, the, um. Oh, the, the, while the state, um. Forgive me, I'll come to you. I just had a blank. I, I, I might as well, what's the other revenue? Yes. Now the property tax, it, it's kind of like the, and the, the income lines on the very front page of that. You'll see the property tax levy. And then you'll see a separate line item for the McCombe enhancement millage. That even though our, we may have more revenue in the property tax levy. It, the way they calculate the, the formula are per pupil, which is the later on. May get reduced because they're assuming we are, we're what 18 mils is we're levying and then between the two that balances out to 18 mils. So. One may go up and one comes down to get us to that per pupil dollar value. So you have the enhancement millage, um, even if you assumed 1%, you know, that's, what did we get? Six, 600,000 last year? So you got a couple thousand there.
Is that, is the enhancement millage, do we just get that every year or is that?
It was, it was approved for 10 years. So for the next 10 years, the money will be allocated to not only the, um, the, the McCombe public schools, but also the charter schools that are in, in McCombe County. And it's based on a per pupil allocation. So the other factor that I'm interested this year is as a county, we're down kits. So your denominator is going to be different this year than it was last year. Your top number being your count, most districts, all 20 of the districts were down. Except Richmond was up. So theoretically we should have a larger portion of the pot. I just don't know. They use the February count day and, and most February counts, we do see a dip. Um, because we do have some students that choose alternate paths, especially your graduation and that, that seniors. And not many people move in mid-year. But I'm, I'm interested in that number and, and so we should be, we should be getting it any day from the ISD.
Brian, what year are we in on that one, on that millage?
Second, second year.
Okay.
Last July.
So we could depend on that coming for another eight years.
You are. And, and as a board, when we, when they built the budget last year and those that were there, you remember this conversation vividly, but. At some point, the expenses that you're charging toward this, towards this, this pot of money, you're going to have to figure out. If it doesn't get renewed, it's going to go away.
Whereas I'm going to, what are you going to do?
It's, it's similar to what we're doing with the counselor and the Esther funds. We basically have three more years if we, if we continue it, that we have a counselor and Esther fund in that fourth year. We're going to have to figure out how to get it back in the general fund or come some other way. So that is a plus. In, in this whole pandemic, it's, someone was looking out for us because that helped every district last year to receive that enhancement millage.
Okay. So we still have to consider settling contracts.
Yes.
Somewhere in our minds.
Brian, did we put in that, remember how we, um, chose not to, um. Budget ahead of time for the replacing the turf? Did you?
Those expenses are not, those are replacing the tirs, eventually bus replacements, eventually technology places are not built into this yet.
So we have to figure that out too, if we want to put that in. And start budgeting or start budgeting.
Correct. The technology. I guess you, I, I don't, it's kind of a bad phrase, but it's got kicked down, the can got kicked down the road because we use a lot of our Esther funds to get our technology up to speed. So. In, in three years, four years, we're going to start looking at the ones we bought two years ago to replace them.
Well, and we talked that, um. The enhancement money is what we talked about that, about the turf, taking. Some portion of that. So I think, I mean, I don't know how much money that is going to be this year. I think that's what we have. Putting out down the road for the turf and, and other things. Okay. So Mr. Walmsley, what do you need from us this evening?
So I guess the question is, do you feel comfortable if I put the, um. Roughly $40,000 and I work with Jeff to get the exact number, but it's a, it's less than 40 for the instruction part and then the supplies. And passing a budget that is, uh, using part of fund balance at this point, because there are still some unknowns. Or do you want me to continue going to get it to zero? Which is now maybe the next step is I would be looking at, are there ways to look at supply dollars, et cetera? And I just want to reiterate and, and, and you know this, Deb, as well as every boardroom here, there's not a lot of money in supply dollars for buildings. So it's not like there's a, a pot of dollars that are.
No.
There. Uh, we do have the curriculum dollars that we were budgeted for the social study, which are going to come to you in June. For the purchase of those materials. So the, all of that is, is still in here. But there's not a lot, I mean, we've. We've adjusted a lot already based on expenses that we know brought things down that we know, um, we didn't have the expenses, et cetera.
So if we have you tonight, just take money out of. To balance it.
I could do a, a, okay.
Cause we might, we might change down the road anyway, because we're going to have more figures in.
Correct. If you, if you get the enhancement, it says you have a, I'm making this number up, another $60,000 to budget. Well, that covers the EMT and then you, you know, balance and you could put the remaining money aside if you want to put it towards turf or, or some of those other.
Our teachers' contracts or whatever.
Teacher contracts, administrator contracts.
Contracts. Okay. What do you guys think for tonight for direction?
Angela, I think you were muted. The superintendent will pick mine up. But yes, I am comfortable with, uh, adding the EMT program back in and then taking funds from general fund. To balance for now. Hopefully we'll get numbers by our next meeting from the state too, and maybe we'll have an increase there as well. So. I'd be willing to start there and maybe even keep in the back of your mind, maybe keeping four sections of kindergarten if surplus does happen to show up.
And right now that budget has four, this has four sections of kindergarten. So this has four sections of kindergarten. My, my only thought was you could, you could, it, it's somewhat of a shell game between the budget you passed and really the reality, once the state passes there. Is you could just shuffle the dollars to cover the other, uh, vacancies. You, you, you're, you're necessarily reducing it until after July 1. But I can, I, so from your angle, you want me to target, get to zero. Add EMT and get to zero. And so you have a balanced budget and use no fund balance.
No, no, no. Use fund balance.
Oh, use fund balance to get to zero.
Yes.
Okay.
I was saying, if we do end up getting to the point, I, I guess I worry about, um.
Understand, I think every staff member is there with you that, and from the administrators who lead the buildings and staff. People like to know what they're doing when they're leaving the summer. So they can begin planning because many of our teachers, they're already starting when school gets out. They're not, they're not, most of them, I would say all of them at some point do not take the summers off, but I agree.
Are we in agreement then that we take from the fund balance?
Yes.
To that.
I, yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay. That's the direction there. I would also say, if you haven't had a chance to look at all the line item, the 90 page document. If you have questions, just get ahold of, um, Mr. Walmsley or Mrs. Shad and ask your questions. That way, is that okay?
Absolutely. I mean, it is, it is a lot of account numbers. And so when you add them all up, it totals for $14 million. So. It's a lot of money.
But we're not cutting. I, I, I just want to say one thing. I'm happy to sit on the board right now and not have to make cuts. Cause I've sat on the other side every year. Okay. We need to make cuts. It's kind of nice. Okay. Any other discussion on the budget for this evening? Okay. We're going to move on to our next, uh, presentation, our superintendent goals. Um, I'm going to ask Mr. Walmsley to share. The goals that he's chosen for, uh, this year. Do you have the password?
Thank you.
Hey, um, I will start by the document I handed you has the four, the six components of my evaluation. So I spent a lot of time thinking from our last meeting as well as thinking about, um, what comments were said by board members. Looking at what my current job entails. And I tried to figure out, you know, how, what are the, the three that you asked me to bring to the board that, um. I think would help this organization and help us as a, as a team. There are items that I did not include, um, and I know one of the comments, um, was like management and fun, funding and so forth. And that one. That's a big part of my job. I mean, especially with the bond now, that is a key part. Um, but I started thinking, a lot of those projects. Have already been decided. There's not, um, there's not wiggle room to have something that we want to do because it's already been defined and approved by the voters. Where we're going to get to that is where the, um, money comes in that is unspent and the dollars or things come in under budget. We come back to you and I bring you, here's my recommendation, but as a board, you guys give me the direction of where to go. But to do that, I think there's some other pieces that have to be in place. I believe for us to be successful. So I took, um, I spent the last two weeks and I've looked at my last. Six evaluations, uh, looking at what comments were made with their common threads that, that were in there. I know there are areas that I personally are always, I, I need to work on. Um, I know there are areas that I strive to become better at. And there are areas that, um, I think I do very well in, um, and I don't want to necessarily make that as a, as a goal, if it's not. For the betterment of the whole organization. Um, so I picked three, um, as you asked me, um, under components two, three and four. I picked number two. Um, and the goal that I set is, you know, we have a, uh, we have a, a, a new board this year. And we all have, we come from a different perspective when we sit at the table. But I truly believe regardless of the, the role that you host, whether you have a, a title as a board officer or not, or whether you. Have kids or not, or whether you, whatever your role is, everybody sitting here, including myself, has really one. Job that we're in charge of. How do we create the best environment for our kids and our staff? Do what they need to do with our kids. But it starts with the team here. That we are, we work together. Uh, we have the ability that if I, if I say something, and this is my goal, so I'm going to take it from my perspective. Or I share something that there is a belief or, or a trust, or that we can work together to solve the solution. So I set the goal is that to continue because for the last. Eight years, um, I think I've, I've had now 20 different board members that I've had to work with, uh, in, in this role. And it all goes back to, we got it, we have to as a collective group, uh, build the trust and collaboration and respect each other in that process. So one of my goals is I, uh, in listening, reading some of the comments that were made at the last for me. I want to set up that is my goal that I'm going from my angle into the, into the group here. That is my hope that we, I can build the trust with individuals, um, that we have a respectful relationship. We may not agree and I don't expect you to agree. I may suggest something that you have a difference of opinion on. Um, and I hope that through the process of working together, we get to a common point of, of a give and take, much like we do with negotiations. As a board, what's in the best interest of the district? So I chose a goal, the superintendent shall continue to build a trusting, collaborative and respectful relationship with the board. Through a variety of means. Sometimes it's through written communications. I, I, when I, I wrote that, I was looking at from the perspective of. Is it more appropriate to put it in writing or more important to pick up the phone and get, have the conversation? The second, the third, second part of that in-person meeting, it might be, hey, I, I, we need to have a meeting. Let me talk and explain the. And it may be seven different meetings that I'm, that I would require to have. It may be in this meeting. I mean, I don't want. Any of our meetings from my angle to portray, um, that we aren't working together because I really believe the, 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 the common thread we all have is we want the best for the kids here. And the last one is through telephone conversations that we are, that you have the ability, if you have a question, I have a question. I don't understand what you're saying, or maybe I'm misreading what's been written in a text. Just pick up the phone and call. And that's, so that's my commitment is through those three means to, to try to build a stronger relationship with each board member. More collaborative, more, we are a team. It's, it's, if you're a sports fan, you know, the importance of a team working together. And when they're not working together, what happens to a team? They don't reach that end, end, end goal. We have a great team here, um, and I think we can be better. Um, but from my angle, I want to work on developing that team. The second one, um, and it's been a goal of mine for, um, a couple of years now is to really look. now, is to really look at the administrative evaluation. I, I, if you ask any administrators, there's been no, no secret with me in, in my conversation with administrator, it is a very challenging evaluation to, to give feedback on, on an administrator, because you have to be, you have to have all the components in order to be marked that one, one criteria, whether it's highly effective or effective. My goal is to bring to you a recommendation for a new tool. As a board, you guys ultimately have the decision to pick the tool. I'm going to bring you a recommendation by law, you have to pick, you have to approve the tool. The tool that we currently use was picked many years ago, was before I got here as, as a superintendent. And we've evolved, we've gone through the training. There's often times I even said with, I meet with administrators, I, I kind of outlined two boxes because I see you here, but I also see you components here, but I can't mark you here. So it's, it can be frustrating on administrator's spot. So my hope is to get in a, bring to you a recommendation of, of a different evaluation tool. And we've already started looking at that, to bring to you so that you have, the administrators have the right tool they need to become a better administrator. It's the same thing with the tool that you guys use for me. I'm looking at when, when you guys provide me feedback, how do I become a better superintendent? Nobody's perfect. We all make mistakes, but we need a tool, we need feedback to improve on. And the fourth component for the other one, this has been a real focus of mine this year because of the need to get communication out to parents. And I never realized how many letters I've written this year until I actually went on the website and you look under this return to learning and you see every letter that, some of it is, it's a standard letter that's sent out for, you know, COVID-19 cases, et cetera. But some of it, we got explained, okay, we're coming back to school, we're going to virtual or, you know, what's going to, what's school going to look like, et cetera. That end product, and it's been said to me on multiplications, needs to be a, a, a very good end product that, that the consumer or public gets. So, you know, I, I will be the first to say, I said with my administrative team, out of all the subjects, I love math, I love science, I love social studies, and there's my language arts. So I want to improve on that aspect. I know that's an area that I have to improve on both, not only with the public, but also as, as a, as a board. I've tried to go this year more of a, give it 24 hours to sit and think about it rather than to respond. I'm not 100% with that yet. I still working on that. But sometimes even you think in, when you have that time to think and craft what you're saying, it comes out better. So again, I, I looked at these, I listened to, communication was a key component that was, that was talked about. Communication is very broad. When you think about it, who does that, who does that involve? Are you looking at written, verbal, oral, et cetera? So I tried to capture some of those components that board members suggested. I looked at components that were in previous evaluations and the ones that were common threads, because that's something that the, the boards have identified with me that, that I need to work on. Now, the other stuff, you know, balancing the budget, that's part of the job. I will do that. Managing our fiscal response, that, that's a, that's a given, that, that's something I have to do. Making sure the bond is on time, that's going to be a huge one for me this summer. Making sure that we're ready to open school with the buildings open come August. You know, that's why every little chance we can to pull a project head, we've been really, we've been really trying to do that, minimizing as disruption of the, the classroom. Though I know with construction, classrooms are feeling, kids are seeing it, but hopefully there's excitement of what's coming this August. So those, though it's a goal that I, that I believe I, I should have, it's one that, that I've already set for myself. It's, it's an internal goal that we're going to, we have, there is no choice. We have to open school in August. We got to figure out how to, how to, to manage the bond projects. And that's something that I do on a daily basis here already. So, so these are the three that I'd like the board to consider, to establish them. The one thing I would just ask, and I, and I, I phrased it as support and measure, to be clear on how we're going to measure that. I don't have anything particular in mind, other than, you know, you could say, did I do it or not? You know, if there's a, if there's ever a time that, that someone feels I'm just going through each goal from my perspective, that I'm not building a trusting relationship or I'm not being respectful, I'd like to know. I mean, I'd like someone to, to say, I'm interpreting it this way. That may not be my means, or that may not be what I intended. But sometimes a perception is reality for people. So we need to be aware of that. So I would ask, just from my angle, that the board be supportive in, in saying something, replying back, giving me a call, not necessarily a text message or an email or, or, but maybe it's just a phone call. Maybe it's an in-person meeting. Hey, I'm noticing X, Y, and Z. I really appreciate it because sometimes when you get into the day-to-day of operating a district, you know, we often call them with the administrators, or I call them Vegas moments. You know, I wanted the minister to come in and say, hey, you know, I don't agree with you. And I appreciated that because it was a check for me to say, okay, maybe I didn't explain the whole picture well enough so that they could, you know, have the pieces. That's what I would expect from the board to also, from, from my angle. The evaluation tool, like I said, I will be bringing you, I've been, I guess there's a couple that I've been looking at. We're leaning towards one that I believe is a very good one. And I believe based on the training that I've gone through on it, it's going to provide the necessary feedback administrators need to become better. And it gives us, it's not so rigid in the categories. It gives us some flexibility to, to really mark administrators where they, where they should be. And then just the improvement of the quality of the end product, the communication. So.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walmsley. I do, I could give you some input, like, I know I'm the one who brought up the goal about the administrators eval. I could just give you some things that I would think we would be looking at to measure that. You know, your training, did you get trained? Did you train the administrators on the tool? Did you mentor the administrators, you know, through the process? Did you follow the process? Did you complete the process? Those are all things I think that we could look at to say, yes, you met that goal, or, or no, you didn't meet that goal, or you, you know, for whatever reason. Those would be some things I know that I'd be looking at.
Or you're still working on that goal.
Or you're still working on that.
If it doesn't come to fruition, you know.
And that's, that's a point I think, I hope everybody understands here. We set goals, but it doesn't always mean you make that goal.
Correct.
I mean, things can happen, things change, things go on. I mean, even as administrator, when I set my goals with Mr. Walmsley, sometimes I didn't meet that goal for various reasons. It's, did you attempt to it? Did you attempt to do the process? Did you attempt to do those steps and, and along the way? And that's the important piece that we have to remember when we do go and look at this as, as part of the, you know, when we measure that goal come evaluation time. So those are kind of my thoughts on that section. I can give you some other ones on the others if you want. Like the written part, we could look at sample letters. We could look at any publication you put out, anything that's out on Facebook, anything that's out on our board packets, anything that's out publicly that's coming from your office. Those could be things that we could look at. And I think, you know, like you suggested, if, if we do see something or something comes up, we need to make, we need to inform you, or we need to let you know, you know, be it an email, be it in person, a phone call, whatever. But we could look at some of those kinds of things. I don't think, you don't put a newsletter out, do you? Or have we?
No, I've been, this year has really been
I know.
communication because it's
Did we do it through the yearbook class or?
We did the first one through the class.
Through the class and the, I sat with Mrs. Shagna and Mr. Castle, and we kind of designed the content and the class then wrote.
Actually about the articles.
And then this one, we adjusted it based on a lot of the feedback we received from a lot of the community members who liked the idea. They, they asked us for different things they'd like to see. So Mrs. Shagna did a wonderful job in, in retooling it. But again, we sat down and said, okay, what do we need to, to highlight to the community and share? So
Okay.
we have made those adjustments.
Okay. And then under the, your first goal, that could be any, I mean, you could keep track of any meetings you've had with individuals, if we are having a concern. Anything that you put together as a, like if we do a, you know, how we take the next step, we did our training, we, we maybe do some team building, anything you do to put that together to develop that, that would be an example of, of working towards that goal. Any phone conversations that you've had with, with board members? I think those would be examples of some things that you could look at, we could look at as far as to measure that goal. Does anybody want to share anything else? Did I take up?
No, you were good. I have a question though about the evaluation tool for the admins. Are we going to see it before you, are, we're going to help decide is going to be the correct one, correct?
The, the, the way the state, I made sure I'm unmuted. The way the state law reads is it has, it's one of the approved or research base. So I'm limited in what I can select, but as a board, you're going to see the instrument that would, and I will be talking to you, okay, this is what it's going to measure. These are the
So you've already chose one?
There, I've been looking at this. I've been looking at ideas of, of evaluation. There is one that, that I am leaning toward that I've been working with Mrs.
Are we getting more than one choice?
Well, I, I was going to recommend, here's what I would recommend to you.
I would like a couple of choices.
All right. Maybe we could just see some other ones and make, make one, this is the one that I recommend. Here's what some of the other ones look like. Because I think some people don't know what a administrative evaluation looks like.
I've seen them. I don't like the one that we've used previously.
No, I know.
Different options.
Are you working with the administrators on this?
We've had conversations. Mrs. Era, Era had conversations with the minister. We shared, here's what we're leaning towards. It, it's one that, that is used in many districts in the area. It has favorable reviews from the, the administrators who have received it, as well as the administrators who have to administer it, the evaluation. So that's how we started in the conversation through, whether it's through Mako or through the superintendent's group.
Right.
You get the ideas. But I, I'll bring, I'll bring the other, that you, you have the, you'll have a current one that you can look at. You'll have the other ones that are state-approved and I'll, I'll bring you examples. Absolutely.
Perfect.
I don't know, I, wait, like, how many are we looking at? I, I don't know why we need to see I would like to see two.
Just, at least two.
Just, just give us another one, or at least another one to look at.
You want two?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Do you need any other information, Mr. Walmsley, for this? Are you good? Or anybody else have any other input?
The only thing I would just ask is that at some point, whether the, if you want to lead it now as a president or somewhere, just formalize the written, how it's going to be measured so that we can all agree that that's, that's what I'm aiming towards. So
Okay.
I got the notes that you gave me, but as a collective group, that would be something that I would just
Okay. So you want me to put something in writing?
Just something as a board, so we all, all the ideas, so we're all agreeing that this is what I'm looking for.
Okay, if you guys are good, I can put something together.
You know, if you had two, then I will, I will make sure I have two. If you want, these are the items that we're looking at, samples. I mean, you know, if you're looking at, you know, keeping a tally, is there a number you're looking for? Is there a, just a log of what I do with board members? Just clarification, clarification, that just, just to make sure we're all on the same page so that, you know, when we, when we do the evaluation, I'm not shooting for this target. And in the mind, you guys were thinking this target, though they're similar. I want to be, I want to shoot for the target that you're setting for me.
Okay. Anybody have any input on what you would like to do or want me to put together? I can put together those comments I made. I'm thinking more of a log. That was kind of where I was just kind of keeping track, maybe a log of what communications he had, what phone calls he had, what, you know, on the first one, that's what I was thinking off the top of my head, a log on the same thing. It could just be a date and time. When did you get trained? When did you get?
I would just say, put, put some stuff together, bring it to the next meeting, we can all look at it.
Okay.
Because we, because we all have to say that we agreed to it because we're all, you know, all part of the evaluation. So I would say just put the comments that you made, put that kind of stuff together and we all look at it and we can go from there. But I, I just want to reiterate again that that first one, like I said, the last meeting, that goes both ways. And I think we need to, team building as a board. Because if we can't work together as a board and trust and collaborate and be respectful, where it's going to be very difficult to evaluate a superintendent properly.
I know that we, Mr. Walmsley and I have talked and we're going to, a suggestion was another level for a team building activity. So we're trying to get, matter of fact, Mr. Walmsley is trying to get with somebody that we might have a workshop and we'll, we'll take that next step. So.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any input you want me to put into this? Okay, I will write something up and have something for the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Walmsley. Okay, we're now on to the next presentation and we're not going to call it a first reading. This is a policy that we had. It was just, I want to have Mr. Walmsley explain it.
Absolutely. Last, in the budget cycle last year, we moved our policies from Neola to Trune. And throughout the August and September and October, we did many first readings of the policy and the board then actually officially approved them. The policies were written differently. They may have had some general similarities in their content, but they were written different. In this process, there was a policy that was written, Richmond, we wrote it. And it was formerly policy 27250, which was commemoration of school buildings and facilities. So in your board packet that I uploaded last week, it didn't have a number because we were, Trune had, was trying to figure out how do they identify district-written policies? And so late Friday, might even have been Saturday, the, the representative sent me, this is, when they add the decimal to a policy, that's more of a district, a code that it's a district-written policy. So this would fall under the policy 3303, which would be donations and gifts to the school. And under that would be this recommendation for this policy where we would place it in our policies. The policy that you have before you, I'm not recommending any change. It was already board-approved in March of 2018. And when the board approved the policy, they also approved the form that was with it. So if there's a individual who would, would like to have a, something named after them or, or a facility or a plant, planting something, a tree or so forth, there's a policy to go through. And it talks about the nomination process, what's required. You know, it can be an appointment of a subcommittee by the board to really look at it, particularly when you're looking at large items, you know, particularly facility names. It goes into what you're considering, the criteria, contributions to the school or Richmond Community Schools, years of service, if it's someone who works here, maybe someone in the community that doesn't work here, if, if applicable, the relevant personal and professional characteristics and so forth. It talks about, you know, in the, in the process or the form, looking at what are the costs that are related. Usually when someone donates something to the district, then the district assumes all those costs going forward. And I think that the, the best example that comes to mind when there's a donation, we had several trailers donated, whether it's the robotics or whether it was the band. Once we receive, it's our job to maintain those trailers. And if it gets to a point of dis, it can't be fixed, then we need to make the decision of replacing it or just surplusing it. How long, you know, at some point, how long is something going to be named or honored? And it gives some guidance on there. So the policy that's before you is I'm, I, in some conversation we've had is not to, it's not really, I'm not asking you to amend the policy. I'm asking you to, just to note that we're going to change the number from 75, excuse me, 7250 to 330, 3303.1. And if, at that point, then we would put it with our policies online so that the policy and the form would be online so that anybody, because it says, it talks about who can, you know, participate in this policy. It could be a student, a staff member, community member, could be board members. And it's just a process that if you're going to look at naming something or honoring someone, here's what we need to think about in that process.
I just have one quick question about board policy. Do, do we ever review them? I'm new, so I'm asking.
Typically the reviews, when, when we were with Neola, there was two spring updates.
Okay.
Trune has one update a year, so I'll usually get those in the summertime. So come August, you'll probably get an update if there's any change in policy. They also have come out with clarification of administrative guidelines, which is the next phase that we're putting online is the guidelines, the, the how we're going to operate, if you will. But when there's a policy update, it will come from Trune and then I'll bring it to the board to, okay, here's what they're recommending changing. Sometimes it's policies, you have to kind of customize it to the district that you're in, because it doesn't always fit with every district. So I may suggest word changes and so forth, but they'll send us an update and then it comes to the board for approval.
So that's usually in the fall then?
Usually. It can be, it can be really anytime. Because, you know, if there's a change in OSHA requirements, you may have you know, if there's a change in OSHA requirements, you may have to act on something sooner. Uh, if there's a change in Title IX compliance, we may have to act sooner. It's kind of legislatively determined. They don't just always look at every policy review. It's usually a, an, a reaction to something that's been passed at the legislative.
Okay. So we don't like go through the whole thing again anywhere?
No.
Good.
Unless you want to, I would not, I mean, I'm more than happy to, but I.
No, thank you.
No.
I just wanted to check.
It's only the changes that would have to be made once the policy's been set.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, um, it's our public comment section. Any member of the public may address the board at this time. Please state your name and you will have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments? And if you could please wave or acknowledge and we will address.
This is Nick Mathis, just got one quick thing.
Okay. Um, go ahead, Nick.
Uh, so for those of you who don't know me, my name is Nick Mathis. I'm the robotics head coach as well as, uh, one of the varsity assistant football coaches. And, uh, just regarding the, uh, board policy, it was just discussed about the commemoration of, uh, school buildings and facilities. I believe in the, um, the old policy that, uh, Mr. Walmsley had stated, it said something about the naming only lasting for an X amount of years. Um, and I just, uh, think that that may, um, if the board found it an interest, but, uh, you know, might, might be want to be revisited only because of, uh, if someone's gonna, you know, go out of their way to, um, name something and put a lot of effort into that. Um, I don't think that it should be removed, frankly, within that kind of time. So just a thought on my end, um, just an opinion I had, but I just wanted to bring that to the board. So thank you.
Thank you, Nick. I think in the policy that we have, it says that it stays for 10 years. And, and, or if there's a reason it needs to be removed, that's what the current, what we have here.
And it does use the word may rather than shall. So you have a discretion that you can, it's not a permanent, that it has to be.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, are there any other public comments?
Not seeing any hands.
Okay. There being no other public comments, we are going to move on to the superintendent and legislative update.
We've already talked about the budget. Um, they're, they're now in the negotiation purse process. So we are just waiting to see what the final, uh, outcome comes. The one thing I do want to make a, a statement is at this point, there is no, nothing that I am aware of that is a pending legislative that's going to dictate how we operate schools next year. So as of today, we are anticipating schools will be in some type of nor, in, in a normal fashion next year. Now I say that, but thumps it could happen between now and when we start school, those legislators get their hands in the mix. So our, our intent has been to be as normal as possible and get to back to a normalcy in, in our educating students. Sorry, I keep putting my back to it. I apologize. So right now there's nothing tie barring something that we have to have a new return to learning plan or we have to do an extended learning plan. Um, so the intent is when you approve the one in May, that should be your last one, which will get us through the, the rest of the year. Again, there's something could change with that. At the last one, previous board meeting, you approved the refinancing of, um, of the bonds to reduce the interest rate. Uh, we have a press release that will be going out to, um, I'll be sending it out tomorrow. Um, and netted, um, three hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars in, uh, interest expenses that we will no longer incur by financing to a lower rate. So it will reduce our, our interest we're paying on, on those, that seven point four million dollars in bonds that we refinance. So that's good news for the, for the district. Mr. Castle recognized the all academic virtual awards are actually, um, he recognized our, our students tonight, uh, Sarah Gasko and Alyssa Systerman. So congratulations to them. They did an outstanding job just to receive that accomplishment. I wish it was in person, but, um, obviously everything's pretty much virtual because that is a, uh, an outstanding event to go to, to, just to see the accomplishments and here are the accomplishments. This past Friday, uh, I went, uh, to the early college of McComb graduation. So I want to give shout outs to Rachel Trevani, Trevano, excuse me, Megan Schuster, Alyssa Nettles and Olivia Cole, who graduated from the early college of McComb, received their associate's degree, um, and are now going on to a, um, bigger and better things, um, post, uh, post McComb Community College. I thank, uh, Ms. Talto for joining me last night or last Friday, excuse me. It was, it was wet. Um, it was rainy, wet and cold. So.
Freezing.
Watch the weather because it was at Jimmy John's Field and that's where our graduation will be. So rain or shine, and it was rain or shine. But it was, they, they really made the event a very nice event for the graduates. And, you know, they had the speeches and the, the kids, uh, pictures on the, uh, the Jumbotron. I don't know what the official name is there, but, uh, it was a cool event. Um, and it was outside to allow all graduates to be together. So we have, I've coming up on Thursday, the Thursday before Memorial Day, I believe it's the twenty seventh, the IAM where John Mueller will be graduating from the IAM, the International Academy of McComb with a, uh, international baccalaureate diploma. So that will be exciting to go see that graduation. Just a reminder, I know Mr. Castle's been sending out communications out to the, to the class of twenty twenty one graduation is Wednesday, May twenty six. We are planning at Jimmy John's Field, you know, again, rain or shine. We're trying to make this a, an, an event to remember. Last year was a little different event to remember because of the circumstances we were under, but I'm just glad we can all be together in one group, um, and go from there. That's really all I have. I mean, there's not, there's, we're, we're nearing, um, the end of this school year. So you'll receive award ceremony invitations. We're doing virtual awards. So if you're going to participate, uh, I'll be sending that out to the board. I know the principals will be sending out to their, uh, parents and students. And we're, we're in the countdown to the summer vacation for their students. So.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, are there any interests, um, from the Board of Ed? I'll start with Ms. Pacito. Ms. Shuboy?
I'm all set, but thank you.
Mr. Simmons?
I have nothing.
Mrs. Sutton?
I'm good.
Mrs. Talto?
I'm good.
Mrs. Zubey?
Thank you. I have nothing.
Okay. And I just again, want to congratulate all of our seniors and especially our top 10. It is pretty cool to see and it's, it was always an honor for me to, to have that ceremony. So again, I want to congratulate them. Okay. At this time, we're going to move on to our action items. Okay. I am looking for a motion for the approval of resolution of support for the McComb Intermediate School District, uh, fiscal twenty twenty one budget.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the attached resolution in support of the McComb Intermediate School District Fiscal Year twenty twenty two budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have a support, support? Is there any discussion?
I would just like, um, sorry, I just, I say something for you. In the board packet, you have the approval. I put the approval policy or the resolution there because based on the last meeting, I didn't hear anybody not in favor of when Angela presented. They did send me a denial, if you will, and with recommendations. So that's why it's not in the packet. So if the board doesn't approve it, there is a different resolution that we could add for the denial. So I just took the direction from the last meeting. So.
Ms. Talto, did you have something?
Just that I will be abstaining because I'm an employee of the McComb Intermediate School District.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Pacito did. You're welcome. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed? Motion carries.
I have to ask abstaining.
Abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I've never done one. So what do I need to do? All the favor. Any abstaining? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. That's a new one. Okay. Next item, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of secretarial furniture for Will Lee Elementary, Richmond Middle School and the Richmond High School.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract to school specialty for secretarial furniture at Will L. Lee Richmond Middle School, Richmond High School for an amount not to exceed seventy two thousand three dollars and sixty three cents. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualifications of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Do I have a support? Any discussion?
I'd just like to say for the board, you see the drawings that are there, they're two dimensional. Um, I met with each of the, uh, secretarial groups, um, sat down. We started with a framework with them and then, uh, we made some adjustments based on some needs. For, this is, though it's considered furniture, it's really a, a permanent piece of, piece of furniture in that office. It's more than just a desk and a chair. There's a, it's hardwired into the, 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 the building to provide electrical outlets in the unit and so forth. And this is all because of the renovations being done at the three buildings. The existing furniture doesn't quite fit in some of the areas that we're, that we're in. So we will be repurposing the existing furniture with other areas so that we can reduce costs and having to replace some of that other furniture. So.
Any further discussion? Okay. This will be a roll call out, roll call vote. Mrs. Zubey?
Hi.
Mrs. Sutton?
Hi.
Mrs. Pacito?
Hi.
Mrs. Shuboy?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Mr., Mrs. Talto?
Hi.
Mrs. Mashan, aye. Motion carries. Okay. I'm looking for a motion for the report, for the approval of art tables and stools for the Richmond Middle School and Richmond High School. Anybody?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract to school specialty for art tables and stools at Richmond Middle School and Richmond High School for the, for an amount not to exceed forty five thousand eight hundred and ninety six dollars and forty nine cents. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the projects that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary, preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Do I have a support, support? Any discussion?
Let's just add that this is, this is how, um, services is three classrooms. The one at the high school and then we are putting, we have two art classrooms now being put in the middle school. Basically where the, Mr., um, Bartels's office is and the staff lounge, those are where the two art rooms are physically to be located. And they will have a kiln in the middle of it. So they can do ceramics in there. So we have three art classes with this purchase.
Any other discussion? This is a roll call vote. Mrs. Sutton?
Hi.
Mrs. Zubey?
Hi.
Mrs. Pacito?
Hi.
Mrs. Shuboy? Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Mrs. Talto?
Hi.
Mrs. Mashan, aye. Motion carries. Okay. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the middle school cafeteria lunch tables.
I read it.
Go.
I motion to accept the recommendation.
We are doing steam. We, we took that off the agenda.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract to school specialty for forty four lunch tables at Richmond Middle School for an amount not to exceed thirty one thousand six hundred and seventy three dollars and eighty four cents. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Do I have support, support? Any discussion?
I'll just say that the current lunch tables, a lot of the welds are falling apart. The clips at the bottom don't hook together. They, they've taken a beating. They've done remarkable for what they, it's a similar lunch table that we're, we're purchasing to allow for it to be benches. So if we're doing something on the stage, you then have the seating in the lunch, you're turning to benches so that people who are watching the performance on the stage will have seating right in the cafeteria. So multi-use table.
Okay. This will be a roll call vote. Mrs. Sutton?
Hi.
Mrs. Pacito?
Hi.
Mrs. Shuboy?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Mrs. Talto? Mrs. Zubey?
Hi.
And Mrs. Mashan, aye. Motion carries. Okay. I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to section eight C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for purposes of negotiations.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We will be going into closed session at eight forty seven. Just so the people who are watching on Zoom, we will only be returning to adjourn.